Welcome to the City Club of Eugene's October 2nd, 2020 program. The Eugene City Council Ward 1 election race. This is the fourth program of our 2021 programming year. My name is Scott Coltrane and I am the City Club President. Support for the City Club is provided by our members and our sponsors. You can become a member of the City Club at our website, cityclubofeugene.org. We have both business and in-kind sponsors, including Diamond sponsors. Kaiser Permanente exists to provide high-quality, affordable healthcare services and to improve the health of our members and the communities we serve. More information at www.kp.org. Support comes from the University of Oregon. Since 1876, UO has helped Oregonians question critically, think logically, reason effectively, communicate clearly, act creatively, and live ethically. More information at uoregon.edu. Peace Health is proud to serve Eugene, Lane County, and beyond. As your hometown healthcare partner for more than 80 years, Peace Health's mission is to keep you and your family healthy. Learn more at peacehealth.org. Lane Community College transforms lives through learning. LCC provides comprehensive, accessible, high-quality educational opportunities that promote student success. For more information, visit lanecc.edu. We would also like to acknowledge the very generous support that we have received from the City of Eugene and from Lane County. Onto today's program. I would like to thank Karen Knudsen and Skip Coburn of the City Club's Program Committee for organizing and coordinating today's session, along with Fred Roberts, who did early work on the program. And we also appreciate reporter Brian Bull of KLCC Radio for moderating today's session. The City Council is Eugene's legislative body. It has eight members and they're responsible for passing laws, setting community goals, adopting policy, and deciding which services the city will provide. Councillors are elected on a nonpartisan ballot for four-year terms. One councillor is elected from each of eight wards, with one half of the council elected every two years. Ward 1 boundaries are roughly 28th Avenue, north to 7th Avenue, and Pearl Street, west to Chambers. It includes the Friendly and the Jefferson West Side neighborhoods and much of downtown. Our speakers today include the two candidates for Ward 1 City Councillor, Emily Sample and Eliza Koschinski. Emily Sample was elected to the City Council in 2016 and serves on the Budget Committee, the Human Rights Commission, and the Climate Action 2.0 Committee. She is a member of the Sustainability Commission, and she also served on the Community Safety Revenue Team. She is the owner of Simple Design, a graphic design firm. She earned a BS in Renewable Natural Resources at the University of Connecticut and studied Forest Ecology at Oregon State University. Eliza Koschinski is Human Resources Manager of South Lane Mental Health. She serves on the City of Eugene Budget Committee and has served on the Eugene Active Transportation Committee, as well as the Climate Action Plan 2.0 Working Group, the Community Safety Revenue Team, and Housing Tools and Strategies Working Group. She also co-founded the Walkable Eugene Citizen Advisory Network. The format for today's Ward 1 program is a little bit different than a typical City Club candidate forum. To accommodate councillor Sample's recovery from a recent accident and to guarantee both candidates' participation, the program will include a pair of short interviews, each taped independently. Neither candidate heard the other's response to questions, and both candidates were engaged with the same list of questions. Thank you to Eliza Koschinski's campaign for graciously accommodating councillor Sample's circumstances and the late change. As determined by the Secretary of State's Voter Information Pamphlet, Eliza Koschinski will speak first, followed by Emily Sample.
Hello, I'm Brian Bull of KLCC, and we are speaking now with Ward 1 City Council candidate, Eliza Koschinski. And we will begin with an opening statement of one to two minutes from Eliza as to why she wishes to run for this office. Eliza, whenever you're ready.
All right, well, thank you so much for having me here today. My name is Eliza Koschinski and I'm running for Eugene City Council in Ward 1. You've just heard a great introduction about me, so thank you so much. But just a little bit from that, I've been a member of the Budget Committee for the past three years and the Eugene Active Transportation Committee before that. I've been on numerous committees for the city. And I'm also the co-founder of WECAN, the Walkable Eugene Citizen Advisory Network, which advises, advocates, excuse me, for more affordable, diverse, and walkable housing in neighborhoods in Eugene. I've spent the past 15 years working in leadership roles at nonprofit organizations to help make sure that they have the tools and resources they need to achieve their missions. Through all of this, I've seen the way that the challenges we face are interconnected. Racial justice, safety, transportation, climate, housing, and homelessness, these are all interconnected. They need solutions that are going to work together, that are going to be sustainable in the long term. And unfortunately, many of the base systems on which we have built our city aren't sustainable. They aren't environmentally sustainable, they aren't economically sustainable, they aren't just. The longer we wait to begin truly addressing that, the harder it's going to be. But I believe that we can chart a better way forward. I know that we in Eugene have the strength and wisdom and compassion to make the changes that need to be made, to make a more sustainable and just Eugene. There's so much work that needs to be done, and I'm looking forward to doing it and to answering these questions today. So I guess we could get started.
Thank you, Eliza Koschinski. Yes, let's begin. First question for you. In your opinion, what is the most important issue on the minds of voters in Ward 1?
I will say that the issue that I've heard the most about has been homelessness. How do we address community members who are unhoused? How do we support them into finding housing? How do we reduce the impacts of homelessness, both on those who are unhoused and on community members at large? So I really feel like this is the, one of the top challenges facing us right now as a city. And as I mentioned before, it is connected to so many of the other challenges that we're facing. When you look at the root causes that lead to people being homeless is our housing shortage, which is affecting not just those who are unhoused, but even people with stable jobs and good incomes. That is a piece of that problem as well. When you look at questions of public health, which are particularly on people's minds right now as we look at the COVID pandemic and how are we dealing with that? When you look at what do we do when there's smoke in our community? All of these end up really focusing the issue of how we work with community members who are unhoused as one of the top things I think are on voters' minds right now.
All right. Second question for you, Eliza Koschinski. The nation has faced an unprecedented crisis with the COVID-19 pandemic, loss of life, and economic shutdown. How do you think the city has responded? And what more can be done to support people today and through 2021?
You know, I think that when the pandemic initially started, one of the things I saw from the city was a level of nimbleness that I haven't seen very often in the past. I think we're known for taking a very, very long time to come to decisions to move into action as a city. And when the pandemic first started, you could see very quick action on the part of the city, which I think was really great. I'm a little worried that we're starting to move into that phase again where we're not really looking at, okay, what comes next? I think it's very hard to make good decisions right now because we don't know what's going to come next. We don't know, you know, are we going to be back in Phase 1 next week? But I do think that we should be taking this time to really look at what we can be doing, both in the short term and the long term to support our citizens, and really reaching out to find and help people figure out what it is that they need. I've talked to some business owners. I know for my organization, the little things that have really helped us through this. I've been trying to talk to other business owners to say, okay, what's going to help you with the economics of this? The answer I get most often is, I don't know. And so trying to really start thinking about that so that when we move into a space where we can start, you know, moving into 2021, we were able to continue to be nimble and respond to the needs of the moment.
Third question. How can you help the City Council to be a more effective elected body?
So I think there are lots of different ways to do that. One of the things that I think would be more helpful is a little bit more conversation at the council table. I feel like a lot of times at council, councillors are just sort of speaking, but not really conversing with each other. I think trying to have actual that conversation so that we can work through those issues in that space would be much more, would help us move forward much more quickly. I think there needs to be a level of accountability, particularly when it comes to time and decision-making, that hopefully I can help bring to kind of draw attention to the fact that it may feel like it's okay to postpone a decision, but at the end of the day, some of those postponements, you know, cause harm to people. I think as well, there's a level of technical expertise, for lack of a better word, that I can help bring. You know, I read budgets and zoning code for fun. Like, I actually really enjoy sitting down, you know, with a mug of tea and budget and reading through it. I know that different councillors bring different strengths, and I feel like that's a thing that I could bring to the table that would, I think, benefit.
All right. Fourth question for Eliza Koschinski. Homelessness and housing insecurity are also among the biggest challenges facing our community. How do you understand the homeless crisis in Eugene?
So it's a multifaceted crisis. It actually is very difficult to talk about it as a singular homelessness crisis because there are just so many different pieces to it. There's a piece of it that is a housing accessibility and affordability crisis. People who are unhoused because literally they cannot find a home that they can afford. That's a problem that you deal with in one way, looking at housing affordability, availability of housing. You have a segment of the homeless, of the unhoused pocket community who are unhoused, who would face challenges even if they could find housing that they can afford. People who are suffering from substance use disorders or mental health concerns, from just a long history of trauma. And for those individuals, looking at the types of supports that we can provide them to address those issues, many of which come from the county or from other nonprofit organizations as opposed to the city directly. And then I think there's a piece of it that is community members who are concerned about behaviors that they see, and all of those behaviors being attributed to people who are unhoused, regardless of whether or not it is someone who is unhoused engaging in that behavior. You know, if you're seeing somebody being disruptive, you don't know whether that person is housed or unhoused. You're making assumptions there. And so I think it's also looking at how do we address those behaviors in a way that don't target individuals who are unhoused in a way that's unfair.
All right. Fifth question for you. What three actions will you commit to working on to address homelessness and housing insecurity in 2021?
So I think that the first thing that I really want to look at is how the city even thinks about this problem. Right now, many of the programs, we've been very much approaching it with a sort of almost Band-Aid mindset. We'll put in place a camp here, a program there, but we haven't really started looking at sort of the systematic pieces that are leading to this crisis. And when you look at how it's structured in our city, it's spread out all over the place. There isn't really a central place, but it's really thinking like, okay, strategically, how are we going to address this? It's divided up among everybody without it really being anybody's full job. And so I think that's the first piece, is to really look at the way that we've structured how we address this problem, to come up with a way that's going to be more effective at addressing this problem because what we've been doing hasn't been as effective as I think anybody would like. I think the next piece is to start looking at the sub, so that's one thing I'll commit to do. The next would be to really start looking at the root causes there. Start looking at what is it that is leading us to have a shortage of housing and affordable housing in Eugene? Commit to make sure that our Affordable Housing Trust Fund is being used to create more housing and more affordable housing. And then I think finally, it is making sure that the programs that we've already started putting in place, dawn to dawn, those sort of programs are being maintained at the level they need to be, even though, and expanded if necessary, which is probably necessary, even though, you know, we're going to be facing very much an economic pressures with the city budget.
All right. Now, given those priorities, please tell us how you will work to build a majority of council support for such actions or any action?
So I think a lot of it is, as I mentioned earlier, being able to have those conversations with councillors at the table, building those relationships, because I think that there are solutions that we can find that will allow us to move forward constructively. And I think it's that being willing to work with people who you disagree with and not just sort of passively saying, okay, here's what has been proposed, do I approve of it or disapprove of it? But doing more of that legislative work to try and say, okay, how do we adjust this to get this to a place where everybody can get on board? And also recognizing that just because everybody's not on board doesn't mean that you can't move forward. We do not require unanimous votes in this city. And so one of the things is recognizing that for everything, we're not going to necessarily be able to make everybody happy and being willing to say, okay, we need to do what's best for Eugene. And if we try and sort of say, okay, everyone's going to get exactly what they want, then really nobody ends up getting what they want.
All right. Question number seven for Eliza Koschinski. The state law re-legalizing a range of missing middle housing programs, housing options, that is, that were once common, like duplexes, triplexes, and row houses, goes into effect in summer 2021. What actions will you support to ensure broader housing affordability and more diverse housing options for Eugene residents?
I think that as we approach Eugene, meeting the requirements of House Bill 2021, which, you know, as I said, I read zoning code for fun, and so I'm very familiar with all the ins and outs of that particular bill and of Eugene's code. I think we really need to, in the past, when we've had these kinds of things come before us, like we did with accessory dwelling units, Eugene has approached it from what is the bare minimum that we can do to meet the requirements of the state law? I think that in order to achieve greater housing diversity, greater housing affordability, accessibility, we can't approach House Bill 2001 and our changes that we need to make to comply with that with the mindset of what is the least we can do to meet this requirement? I think we really need to be thinking about the spirit of our law, really examining our code and saying, okay, what are the things that are making this hard? And really going above and beyond what we're being required to do in order to help build a Eugene that's going to be more equitable for everyone.
All right. Question number eight. What are your plans for managing continuing growth with respect to transportation, public safety, and utilities?
So I believe that with transportation, because I think they're a little bit, they're all connected. But I feel like particularly with transportation and utilities, this almost goes back to the last question, everything being connected. As we continue to grow, if we try and say, okay, we're going to sprawl out, we are going to have greater challenges with transportation, with being able to promote active transportation and sustainable transportation, because the more things you're spread out, the harder it is to have active transportation. In addition, with utilities, as they get spread out further, it becomes harder and harder to provide that service. So I really think it goes back to looking at how do we make sure that we're growing up and not out? Because that reduces the burden on our transportation infrastructure, on our utility infrastructure, and allows us to focus on maintaining and upgrading what we already have as opposed to building new things that we're going to have to then maintain and expand. So really looking at that growing up and not out.
All right. Question number nine for Eliza Koschinski. Eugene's Kahoots program has been mentioned on several national news articles about police reform and community-based public safety systems. How can Eugene continue to improve our public safety system and better serve and protect all community members?
So I think that really Eugene should be on a forefront of really thinking about what are alternative ways to deliver a number of these services. Kahoots is a good example, but when you think about all of the things that we are asking police to do, there are many, many things that they're just not the best person to be doing it. I think we need to be developing more programs like Kahoots and supporting them in a more coherent way. Different needs are going to require slightly different approaches. We can't just say, okay, now Kahoots goes out and does everything. But, and that's a little bit why I've been talking some about the city structure. Because right now, as we develop these innovative programs, we don't have a home for, we don't have really a clear place where they're going to go. And so really looking at, okay, we're going to be looking at alternative, alternative ways to address public safety. We're going to be looking at ways that are more progressive. Where do we put those? Do they go in their own department? Do we spread them all out so that they're not working together as well? And so I think, I think it really is saying what we've, the model that we've been using for the past 100 years isn't producing the effects and the outcomes that we want. And so how do we try new things like Kahoots, which isn't new for Eugene, but it's new for a lot of people? How do we develop the next Kahoots?
All right. And we have just under 10 minutes left in our segment. Question number 10. How else can the City Council work to more effectively address racial injustice and inequity in our community?
So I think that council, first of all, needs to lead by example. One of the things that I, I think I've been a little concerned about is that while we've set up a committee to deal with this in this committee, you know, I was very pleased to see that they were going to be providing people participating in it because they're right, we are asking the same people to come help us solve this problem, you know, over and over again. And, but I worry a little bit because I've been on a lot of committees for the city. And a lot of the times when those committees make their recommendations, what council ends up doing is radically different from what those recommendations were. I feel like one of the things that we need to do is listen to our marginalized communities much better, provide better routes for them to be able to communicate with people in positions like City Council. But providing those routes of listening doesn't really do much if there isn't follow-through. And so I think the first thing that needs to happen is when we start hearing what's coming, what people are needing, we are expedient and quick about following through with, with the things that need to get done. And I think as well, you know, really looking at what are the structures that we have in place as a city that are leading to various types of bias? You look at sort of the roots of police systems, you look at the roots of our housing code, whether or not the people who are currently participating in them realize that or have this as their intent, the background of many of those things is very, very problematic. And so if we're not willing to acknowledge that, for example, the reason why we have the type of zoning we have now, it was designed to exclude black people, people of color from neighborhoods, and recognizing that how can we build more inclusivity, reduce bias in our community if we've, if we're still using these systems that were designed with bias in them?
All right. Now, both Ward 1 candidates are on the Mayor's Climate Action Plan 2.0 Work Group. Tell us, please, about your climate change priorities. What will you do to mitigate the effects of climate change through actions in the transportation, waste prevention, and building, construction, and operation sectors?
So I think that the first thing that we need to do when it comes to climate is really look at the fact that we've set our goals, but the city hasn't necessarily taken ownership of those goals. The Climate Action Plan has written, we will not achieve the goal the city set for itself without state or federal action. And recognizing that that is, I think, the first step. Because what that means is that we don't have easy choices left. We can't just do the things that people are going to be like, well, you know, I'm happy with this, this isn't going to affect me at all. We really start to have to start thinking about bigger changes because if we just sort of leave it as is, we're not going to meet those goals. I think the first thing that we need to do is really look at transportation and car-centric development. Eugene is a very car-centric city. It's going to take time to address that, and I don't think there's a technological solution that's going to allow us to continue to drive as much and still reduce our climate change, or reduce our emissions to the degree we need to. And so I think that's really a first step at saying like, okay, how do we, how do we create an environment where we are seeing our active transportation modes go up and not down like they are now? I think when it comes to waste reduction, it is looking at better ways to encourage people to use less to start. Because you don't have to worry as much about waste if people are really figuring out how to reuse items, how to, how to, you know, sort of look at what is, what is needed and what isn't. And so, you know, I think there's a lot that needs to be done there, way too much to listen to the time that we have. But I do think it's that approach of realizing that we need to be doing much more, much faster than we are.
All right, Eliza Koschinski, we have just under four minutes here, so I think that's time for one more question and a closing statement.
Okay.
The Triple Bottom Line refers to the evaluation of economic outcomes according to their economic, environmental, and social benefits, a framework the City of Eugene utilizes. Tell us more about how you see the roles of the public and private sector in encouraging economic vitality in our community.
Wow, that's a question that I can answer in less than, less than a minute. Honestly, what I'll say is that the Triple Bottom Line is a, is an amazing tool that we can, we can look at for how, how to kind of think about those things. I do think that we really need to be doing a lot more work on that. And with the time limit, I'm not sure that I can get into too much more detail before I run out of time, so.
All right. So finally, with the questions that we have had answered, let's now shift to your closing statement. You have one to two minutes.
All right. Well, I do want to thank you so much for having me speak to you all tonight. If you would like more information, my website is electeliza.com. And please vote by November 3rd. This 2020 election is so critical. Our votes are essential at the national and state level, but also at the local level. Eugene is facing major challenges right now. Some are ongoing, a housing shortage, a homelessness crisis, climate change, racial discrimination. These ongoing issues are being made worse by multiple immediate crises. The pandemic, the economic crash, the wildfires and the smoke. Euginians have stepped up to the challenge. We are passionate and compassionate, innovative and creative. Every day, I've seen residents and groups in Eugene who are doing amazing things to make our to make our present and our future better in ways big and small. I'm running for city council because we don't have the luxury of being tempted. The status quo is unsustainable and unjust. It has led us to the point of crisis that we are in now. Eugene can and should be a leader in addressing the challenges that face us. Yes, it is hard. We are asking our residents to make hard choices without a lot of options every day. We can't expect less from our city leaders. We need city councilors who have the passion, the vision, the knowledge and ability and courage to make the choices that need to be made to make our city sustainable and just. Together, we can overcome these challenges and help Eugene be the city that we know it is in our hearts. As a city councillor, I will work every day for all of Eugene so that we can get this done. And thank you again for having me.
Eliza Koschinsky, thank you very much for your time and your answers to our questions. And on behalf of the Legal Women's Voters, City Club, and many of our other, many of our other civic partners, again, thank you for your time and your information. Hello, I'm Brian Vol with KLCC, and I'm talking to Emily Simple, who is running for Ward one city council for the city of Eugene. And Emily Simple, you have two minutes to make an opening statement before we get to questions.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you to the City Club for hosting this forum. I've been a member of City Club since 2016 and tried to go to as many of the lunch programs as, as I could. And I miss those as we all miss seeing each other. I have a quick disclaimer, last month and I was in a serious car accident. Car I was in was T-boned by someone going through a stop sign. If you drink, do not drive. Anyway, I was seriously hurt. I was in the hospital, I had surgery and a concussion. I'm recovering quite well, but it takes some time. And having a concussion was not on my bucket list. I do not recommend it. But it means I have to be really careful with my energy and it's unpredictable. So I had to make some choices. First is recovery. Second is keep on being a great councillor. And third is campaigning, which I'm doing right now. But I don't have really slick prepared statements because I was busy doing the first two things. I've lived in Eugene since 1985. It's my home. I love it. I'm not a politician. I'm doing this because I want to help. I want to have Eugene be safe, happy, and thriving for everybody here. I've been active in a lot of different organizations and not only was that fun, but I've met a lot of different people. So when I'm talking to constituents, I find we usually have something that we really resonate with each other. And this helps me to, to listen. I'm approachable and responsive. Always looking for equity, who pays, who gains, what's it doing to the climate? Have experience, knowledge of the issues, good connections in the community and with staff. And I've got momentum. We're in the middle of many projects that I want to keep going. And of course, we have some really challenging new ones that are going to take innovation, insight, and determination, and I have those. I'm looking forward to my second term and I'm looking forward to your vote for my reelection as city councillor for Eugene Ward one.
Thank you, Emily Simple. And now we move on to the first question. In your opinion, what is the most important issue on the minds of voters in Ward one?
Homelessness, homelessness, homelessness. And that's how I got into this when I was active in Occupy, protesting the inequalities of, of the world. A lot of homeless people came to the camp and we found that three meals a day, a chance to sleep without fear of rain, rape, or robbery, and being seen changed people. So I'm a big proponent of shelter first. We have too many people under the sky. But we have to look at why we have all this homelessness and work on those causes like drug addiction treatment and mental health treatment, which we need to increase our partnership with the county to get those going. And of course, that leads to, to housing and jobs, but that's another question. I really want to see us work on decriminalization of homelessness. You cannot sleep in this city. We'll feed you, we'll house you, I mean, we'll clothe you, but you cannot lie down and sleep. This is a critical human need. It's very hard for me to tell people, don't be here, but go nowhere. So we're making some strides. We had, I bet I'm almost out of time. A council today with a bunch of new rest stop sites, pretty much covering all the wards. I'm really excited about that. We've got CARES dollars we need to spend by the end of the year. And my goal is to spend that money in ways that we have infrastructure we can carry on after the CARES money runs out. It's, it's a complicated thing and I think it's first in people's minds, especially because it's so visible. However, the visible component is a small part. And I think that we have to work on that part's own solutions. And then the, the more common, larger group of people who need our help. And we have capabilities of doing that.
Very well. And we need to move on to the next question, which is, the nation has faced an unprecedented crisis with the COVID-19 pandemic, loss of life, and economic shutdown. How do you think the city has responded? And what more can be done to support people today and through 2021?
Well, this is the big one. This is the immediate one, homelessness, COVID. Our lives are changed. Our world is changed. We don't even know all the ways yet. So we're kind of dealing with this on the fly, the whole world is. And we weren't really ready. So it's a resiliency problem too, that we can work on with this wake-up call. Is the city doing enough? We're never doing enough, but I think we're doing a good job. Staff is just working so hard that I don't get to talk to them very much. They're really busy. And when I do talk to them, they've, they've made big strides. We have helped out somewhat financially, but that goes way too fast. Just saw today that the Oregon CARES Fund for Black Relief and Resiliencies has grants available to black-owned businesses, nonprofits, individuals, and families impacted by COVID-19. So this, the city's helping with these things. I think the streetery is downtown to help the restaurants, the parking for the restaurants is helping those small businesses. But we have a lot of businesses and a lot of small businesses are, are going to disappear. So we need to incentivize them to keep going.
All right. And just a prompt too, to keep your responses to about a minute to three minutes maximum, so we can get through all the questions.
I don't have a clock, so wave at me or something.
All right. But no, I think you're keeping the time pretty well here. Third question for Emily Simple. How can you help the city council to be a more effective elected body?
We get criticized a lot for not being effective. And we're criticized for being very slow, and I will absolutely agree with that. In part, it's because we're looking at so many things. In part, because the staff is working on so many things, it can be too much time before things come back. So we kind of have to catch everybody up. We talked at our goal session on Saturday about that we have so many projects. But this time is different and we're going to have to triage the subjects that are more critical right now and let the other ones that we have been working on, not disregard them, but they're going to have to wait because people need to be sheltered and they need living wage jobs. And we have to work on those. Talking to each other, you know, we can't talk to each other very much outside of council because of, of quorum challenges. But listening to each other at council, I think we, we do a pretty good job, but you can always do better. And I look forward to it. You know, we're going to have some, some new councilors and things will always shift up a little bit when that happens. So I think good things are ahead as far as council working together.
Fourth question for you. Homelessness and housing insecurity are also among the biggest challenges facing our community. How do you understand the homeless crisis in Eugene?
Well, I think that I already went over a bunch of that. It's, we have to look upstream. Why do we have homelessness? And again, we don't have houses people can afford. We don't have jobs people make enough money to afford the houses. We don't have enough jobs. We don't have enough education. We don't have enough help. We've, with the CET money, we're giving 500,000 to rent help to keep people housed and 300 towards affordable housing projects. We have a couple of mixed income projects working downtown and the, the big HUD home project over at Fifth Street. It's so complicated as we know, and homelessness is not one problem. It's about a lot of people, a lot of different people with a lot of different challenges. I mean, things like healthcare, we need to have more even healthcare. We need to treat everybody like we're a person, that we have the same value. And sometimes that means we have to help people. So let's do that.
Fourth question for you, Emily Simple. What three actions will you commit to working on to address homelessness and housing insecurity in 2021?
I want us to find land or a place to make campgrounds for more people. I love the rest stops, the microsites, these are good. I think we're going to have shelter for 600 people this winter, but we've got 3,000. We don't see all of them. We need a, a larger facility. I like the traditional campgrounds where you have the loops with the bathrooms in the middle and everybody gets a site for a car and a picnic table and a tent and you have camp host. It's, it's impossible to tell people, go away when there's nowhere to go to. I think we need to work on a decriminalization of our homeless. There are people too, and they have challenges. You know, if, if you want to have a beer and you have a house, it's not a problem. If you want to have a beer and you have nowhere to go inside, you're going to get in trouble more than the people who are housed. Need to look for ways to help people instead of putting them into punishments. Shelter, assistance, decriminalization, and public safety. We're looking at some changes in how the police operate. And the police don't want to be shutting down the campgrounds. So we need to find other ways to do that. Luckily, with our community safety payroll tax, we are allowed to shift the money within a huge, not huge, but a lot of different departments and ways to help this. We've got a lot to do and I don't know all of the ways, but I am committed to working on this. This is my first project.
Given those priorities, tell us please how you will work to build a majority of council support for such actions or any action?
Again, I can't talk to more than three other people or we've got a quorum. But one thing I never shut up about at council is that we need a place for people to sleep. And I think at our work, our work, our goal-setting session on Saturday, one thing that really stood out is that our councilors are on the same page about these critical problems, about sheltering the homeless, about housing, about jobs. And you know, the COVID thing, a lot of that is jobs and housing. What are we going to do about the climate? I mean, right now it's kind of almost in the backseat because everything's on fire in the front seat. But we can't forget that. No, it's, got to keep that going too. And then something that I care about, having lived near downtown 30 some years, I've gotten a lot of, of help for downtown ambassadors, programming, bathrooms. And yet we're really fragile. And with the COVID crisis, it became a ghost town. I had to walk downtown. It was like a movie set, but everybody had gone home. It's more lively now. If we go into another shutdown and cases are rising, we're going to have even a bigger challenge. We're looking at how it is now, but I don't think this is the status quo. So deep breath, fasten your seatbelts, don't get T-boned.
All right. Seventh question for you, Emily Simple. The state law re-legalizing a range of missing middle housing options that were once common, like duplexes, triplexes, and row houses, goes into effect in summer 2021. What actions will you support to ensure broader housing affordability and more diverse housing options for Eugene residents?
I can't wait until December when the state and the committee finally tells us what they really want. It's been difficult without guidelines when this first started to know what was going to be allowed. Majority unanimous council vote to, to fight it, hall rule. But that didn't happen. There were some other things that a variety of councilors pushed for, some got voted for, some didn't. Pretty much all got tossed off the table. So I'm really looking forward to what we can do and then figure out how it fits into Eugene. I'm always concerned about a cookie cutter approach. I live downtown where middle housing is not missing. It's very crowded. So I could go, oh, where are we going to put it? But I live in, in one of the most dense parts of town. One of the things that's going to be interesting is how much does density have to change? Are our parameters going to change? What about lot size? I'd really like to see us help with smaller houses. And we hear that people don't want so much space to clean. I, I can understand that. I'm looking forward to cottages and the cluster housing. I just think they're so welcoming and a nice use of space to have a common green area and your own house.
Question number eight. What are your plans for managing and continuing growth with respect to transportation, public safety, and utilities?
Boy, all of them at once. That's a lot. I'm on the Northwest Natural team and also E-Web liaison, so energy has been worked on quite a lot and it's somewhat contentious. And nobody's going to be happy, but I, I'm really hoping that we can get, get on with it. What were the other two things?
We were talking about respect to transportation, public safety, and utilities.
Okay, utilities, public safety and transportation. Transportation is really hard because things are changing, you know? Some people are like, no cars. If we could just get rid of cars, that would take care of a lot of our, our carbon problems. I've always promoted free electric buses. I walk everywhere. I'm happy to see more bike paths. I think that cars are certainly going more towards electricity, which is, is great. But you know, it's kind of like the old houses that we don't want to rip down because they're already built. They won't have the climate impact of a new one. They're affordable. Older cars have already been built. They're polluting, but you know, a new one costs money too. I think we need to really think about getting away from, from cars for transit. Public safety, wow, you put a lot into one question. That's changing a lot too. With all the energy that we have now for reform and innovation and reimagination, this is the time. And it's changed from when we started with the public safety initiative. We're set up with the payroll tax, which isn't going to bring that much money now because people aren't working. And we can shift it around. The police don't want to be in charge of camping and really they don't need to be doing traffic stops. Definitely need to get more social workers and a kinder way to deal with many of our problems so they can go to solutions instead of more, you know, a continued situation on, on the streets. But we need to have the people in the outskirts have police response that's reasonable. It's going to be fascinating and, and I think we're going to come with some really good outcomes, both from both from listening to our residents, we have the Police Ad-Hoc Committee and then the Communities Workshops. The first Ad-Hoc Police Committee is tonight. So that's going to help us a lot as we move forward in our policing and public safety.
And we have time for probably about two to three more questions, as well as your closing statement. Question number nine for you, Emily Simple. Eugene's Kahoots program has been mentioned in several national news articles about police reform and community-based public safety systems. How can Eugene continue to improve our public safety system and better serve and protect all community members?
Well, you know, I talked about this a bunch in the last question. We need to listen to each other, you know? Things haven't been fair, they're not fair. And a lot of us don't even realize that they're not fair. I know I have prejudices that I'm not aware of. So it's time to really look at those and to learn about each other because a lot of prejudice comes from ignorance. And the more we can get to know each other, the more comfortable and the safer we'll be. And that includes our public safety officers, that includes all of us to have a safe town. I think that the challenges many of us face are so overwhelming. And we need to help those, we need, again, you know, why do we have crime? Let's look at why, maybe we don't have to, maybe we can change some of that. Maybe when people are in trouble, we can help them to get to a better place. So they feel good about contributing, and we don't need the police to bother them.
Question number 10. How else can the City Council work to more effectively address racial injustice and inequity in our community?
I sure seem to be getting ahead of the questions, don't I? I kind of think I answered that already, we need to listen to each other, we need to get together, you know? Come on, people, get together right now. To make anything happen, we need cooperation, and that means community, and that means communication. So we need to talk, and we have the Ad-Hoc Committee and the Communities Workshops. Those are good starts. I know they're fall into January, which may seem like a long time, but let me tell you, after four years on City Council, that's pretty quick. So maybe that will be a good example for some other projects to go along more quickly. It's essential, there's all this energy right now for us to make a better world. We're losing this one as we create a new one, let's make it right for everybody.
All right. Question number 11 for you, Emily Simple. Both Ward One candidates are on the Mayor's Climate Action Plan 2.0 Work Group. Tell us about your climate change priorities. What will you do to mitigate the effects of climate change through actions in the transportation, waste prevention, and building, construction, and operation sectors?
Well, we talked about transportation already. Construction's really big, you know, some construction is very polluting to have all those materials, especially concrete. Again, smaller houses would help, we didn't have to use all that construction. I'm really interested in the 20-minute neighborhoods. I think that's something that we really need to put some more attention into, you know? Envision Eugene has the outskirts. I'd like to see us sort of have little villages within our city that are served by my free buses. And you know, if people can walk to work, that saves a lot of gas use. And that's why I think that the mixed housing downtown is important. Why should the janitors and the dishwashers have to come in from Vinita? That's not good for the climate. So also in that, you know, we put a lot of attention into downtown, which I think it needs, it's my word. But downtown isn't the only place in the city. And I think we need to be equitable about incentivizing growth and things where people need in different parts of the city. So not just about downtown, everybody needs to have what they need for a good life so they can come downtown.
All right. Emily Simple, we have gone through 11 questions, and by the looks of the time here, we have just enough for a roughly two-minute closing statement from you.
We've covered a lot of stuff. It's fascinating times right now, scary, but an opportunity to really make things different and better. We say, "This normal will never be here again." And the new normal looks really scary. But together, I believe in you, Eugene, I think we can do this. And I want to help us do this. I am so dedicated, this is what I want to do. And I like listening to people, and that's something that's been really hard with COVID. I'm approachable, if you want to meet with me, if I'm not being T-boned, I'm ready to do it. Because that's how we make the city we all want, is to listen to each other. I do that, I have the knowledge, I have learned so much in four years. It's never boring, I can't wait to learn even more and to work with council. Eugene should be the place, it's going to be the place where all people, each person, can pursue happiness. We can do that, and I'm going to help, thank you.
Emily Simple, on behalf of the City Club and the Legal Women's Voters, thank you very much for your time.
This has been our October 2nd, 2020 program, the Eugene City Council Ward One Race. Before we proceed, I'd like to recognize some gold sponsors. Network Charter School, Sacred Earth Botanicals, and Emergency Veterinary Hospital. It is our expectation to have the taped conversations available by Fridays at noon. We want to thank you all for supporting us during this difficult time. Before we thank our speakers today, there are a few quick announcements. Thank you to our in-kind sponsors, KRVM 91.9 Radio, PAC Info and Simplified Computing LLC, Dot Dotson's Photographer, and Network Charter School. And a special thank you to public radio station KLCC 89.7 for airing City Club programs on Mondays at 7:00 PM. And thank you to Community Television of Lane County, Cable Channel 29, for televising recent City Club programs. Next week, we will continue our election season programming when the City Club of Eugene and the League of Women Voters of Lane County host candidate forums for two House districts. Oregon's House District Eight and House District 11. We will have the candidates Timothy Aldahl and Paul Holvey running for House District Eight, and Katie Bossert-Kleiser and Marty Willdie running for House District 11 seats. Please join us again for that program on October 9th. More details and information about future programs can be found online at the City Club's website, cityclubofeugene.org. Now, I would like to thank today's speakers for a great program. Thank you, Emily Simple and Eliza Koschinsky. I want to offer a special thank you to those of you who contribute to the City Clubs of Eugene's 2020 Summer Fundraising Campaign that ran between July 24th and August 31st. I'm pleased to announce that we raised a record total of over $20,000. Due to the generosity of some key City Club supporters, gifts were matched, doubling their impact and ensuring that the City Club can continue to offer regular programs on a wide range of issues important to our community. These funds are used to make technological improvements so we can reach more members and listeners and offer more innovative programs through digital broadcasts, videos online, podcasts, and of course, our time-honored KLCC Radio Hour on Monday evenings. We are committed to our mission of building community vision through open inquiry, and we rely on your support to get through these troubled times. Thank you very much for your generous support. That concludes today's program. Be well and stay safe.